Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
All right, who am I missing here? It's our city manager. There he is. Good morning, City Manager.
Morning, Mayor.
All right, it is 9:00 a.m., so I'll go ahead and call this special meeting to order. I'll start with the full call, so I'll turn to our city clerk.
Mr. Isasi.
Present.
Mr. Repart.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Moody.
Present.
Mr. Lanier.
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, thank you. All right, Commissioners, we have two agenda items before us today. The first one is a resolution specifically for our property tax millage rates. And then the second one is specific to adapting the budget. So what I'd like to do, before we get to the items, turn it over to our city manager just to provide a few final thoughts as we move forward with these two agenda items today. He can give an overview of both items, and then I'll call each resolution individually, and then we can have a discussion before a vote. So I'll turn to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, Commissioners. This is Decision Day that has resulted in a process of engagement. And I want to again thank you for your engagement through the budget deliberations, as well as formulating, helping to formulate strategy for this year, as well as the staff. And I've recognized him in detail before, and so I won't go in that level of detail today. But just to simply say, our staff has done an outstanding job. And I'm really, really pleased to partner with them again in this year's proposal that has once, again, last year allowed us to be recognized by the Journal Finance Officers Association for municipalities in terms of the quality of effort that the city puts into its budget preparation. What I'd like to do this morning is, as the mayor said, is to cover in general just a few slides, and I'll ask Mr. Kenfield to bring them up at this time. That highlights our approach towards this year's property tax rate and the city's budget. We've shared this before, but for those who may be viewing, and for the first time, I may have missed some of the other presentations, I'll do a recap. Next slide. And this is the culmination of a lot of deliberation and discussion workshops. And you'll see where we began this journey last September that allows us to arrive to this point today. Next slide. And part of our approach in this budget was to make sure that we can adjust for the impact on revenues, a significant reduction in revenues that we have received from income tax, parking, and all other, and other sources of fees have been significantly reduced through the COVID. And we are very fortunate to have federal relief money. And we gave the updated number earlier this week of $92.3 million from the American Rescue Plan Act. Over, we'll expect to receive that over a two-year period. And that allowed us to focus on a continuation budget that does not result in a reduction of services. And I've said this before, during this pandemic, the demand for city services has not decreased, but has increased in many, many service areas and departments. This budget results in the total appropriation of $546 million approximately, with approximately $156 million being appropriated for the General Operating Fund. The tax rate has an overall increase of .188 mils, and that's primarily due to the parks millage that the voters approved previously. Next slide. So just as a highlight, we continue to focus on equity with the use of our equity lens. And this, there is $25 million in highlighted equity investments, and we shared those in detail. And that's, those highlights are significantly up from previous years. We continue to focus on capital with over, almost $100 million in capital investment, and specifically focusing on areas that have not received as much investment previously. We have, as I've shared before, over $100 million that will be in our ecosystem within the coming year with all of the relief money to prevent eviction and homelessness. $20 million of that roughly will be in the city's budget for fiscal year '22. And there'll be another $80 million in federal relief outside of the city's budget, but within, available for residents within Tarrant County. So significant investments in housing homelessness. We shared, and you approved the budget for all of our authorities for economic development of $43 million. And we continue to focus on those areas of strategic priorities. And we've outlined those specifically for you, as well as the ongoing concern around public safety spending. This budget reduces the police department's share of the General Operating Fund from 38.6% to 35.8%. Next slide. Again, the ARPA framework that we have proposed would be to take the roughly $92 million and allocate almost $60 million of that for revenue replacement over the course of fiscal year '25. And you'll see what we've proposed for usage of, in terms of backfilling revenue loss for '21 and '22 for income tax. But also, we have proposed to continue the investments in several areas for fiscal year '22, about $2.1 million for the master plan for supporting our housing efforts, as well as continued activation for special events in our homelessness efforts. Then you'll see another $10.2 million that we will begin working with you in terms of potential allocations around the post-budget process. And then in future fiscal years, there'll also be roughly another $19.3 million of federal relief funding that you will, we will work with you to determine our best to appropriate that for a total of additional $29.5 million for future allocations outside the current budget process. Next slide. And just a reminder, I shared this verbally the other night. I wanted to narrate it and frame it in the slide as well about the participatory budget process. And we shared some of the cities that all are significantly larger than Grand Rapids. Sacramento, Durham, and Oakland are twice, at least twice as large as our community population. And what they have done is they have allowed their residents to communicate in designated funding for certain projects, but not the residents to determine how to allocate the entire budget. So participatory budget is around a focused amount of funding. And so you see in Sacramento, did it with $1.1 million. And Durham did it with almost double that amount. In Oakland, less than a million. And so what we have shared in that potential post-budget process is at least $2 million for neighborhood-related funding events that the commission can choose to engage in a participatory process. Or you could make the entire $10 million part of a participatory process. But those are options to be considered. But I do want to remind the commission, and in addition to that, Grand Rapids has a very involved and engaged participatory process in many other aspects of the budget through our authorities, through our advisory boards, whether it's parks, or the Mobile GR, or stormwater, or vital streets, the various commissions. And so just wanted to share that. And again, we are very pleased, you can remove the slides now, Mr. Kenfield. We're very pleased to be in this position in this type of recession that we are fortunate, as I said earlier, not to be talking about reductions in services, but the continuation. And very pleased for that, and I look forward to your vote today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. So Commissioners, what I'd like to do is move to the two resolutions and start with the property tax millage, and then move to the second one related to the budget. So I'll take the first one. Unless, did anyone have any questions for our city manager? I know a lot of what you shared today is a review of what we've been talking about for several weeks now. Okay, so I'll, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Moody, sorry about that.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to ask the city manager one question, if I may.
Sure, absolutely.
That was in reference to the third ward. I didn't see it on the, just not participatory, but I didn't see it on the file in reference to Neighborhoods of Focus was mentioned, but not Third Ward, just Third Ward Equity of Neighborhood of Focus.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Moody. On that slide, it was referenced there, both for Third Ward Neighborhood of Focus. If we can pull that up. There it is, Third Ward Neighborhood of Focus Equity Funding. And post-budget process, roughly $2 million.
Okay.
Yeah, and Commissioner, remember a few weeks ago when we talked about Third Ward? We, it was a little confusing because still have the funding that's in the current budget with our current dollars and ARIS dollars. And those, remember, those efforts that were currently underway and continue to be underway are separate from the conversation that we'll have with the ARPA funds. Commissioner Lanier?
I actually had a similar question, and I'm on slide three. In your narrative, City Manager, it doesn't mention the Third Ward Equity Fund. So am I to safely assume that the way you've spelled out the capital investments, that you're just singling out the $26 million that were invested into Neighborhoods of Focus? Is that what you're doing there?
So can you pull that slide up?
Slide four.
Yeah, slide four. Yeah, I think what we did on that slide, Commissioners, is just look at all capital. The Third Ward Equity Fund is not 100% capital. So there was no need to single out just what was invested by capital in each ward. But we do have slides that shows the allocation and distribution that we shared previously when we discussed capital, but.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager. I know it's, this is a broad, high-level overview. But I know that those details are obviously in some of the prior slides. So we can make sure that everyone has access to that. All right, any other questions before I read the first resolution related to the property tax? Okay, so this first resolution before us is a resolution establishing the 2021 property tax millage. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right, moved and supported. So Commissioners, we had a public hearing related to this. We saw the breakdown of all the different property tax millages and the adjustments because of the Headley and pop-up. Any questions or comments? I know Ms. Clearan did a nice job of explaining how Headley and Prop A and the pop-up all work together, because it can be pretty confusing to people at times. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll turn to our city clerk.
Mr. Repart.
Yes.
Mr. Lanier.
Hi.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Isasi.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, Commissioners, next that will take us to a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2022 city budget. Can I get a motion?
So.
Square.
All right, moved and supported. So Commissioners, we'll open this up for comments. I think I'll start with a few thanks and a few observations, and then turn it to each of you. So first, I want to thank the city manager and the entire team. I know we've all are well aware of the work that goes into creating the budget every year. And I think this past year was particularly challenging for staff because in January, they were working on a budget that had significant deficits, and then had to pivot quickly after the recovery plan was approved in DC. So I just want to say thank you to our entire team for their work on this budget. It's a lot of work every year. And as I think one of you said last time, we'll get started on next year's budget tomorrow. But we'll also get started on the additional ARPA funds after this process is done as well. I want to thank everyone who has weighed in on this important process in this budget. We do appreciate all the input and the comments. And then, and then I wanted to say a few things that was interesting last night. I was reading through a number of my notes over the past several, several weeks. And I counted, and this is actually my 16th budget around this table, which makes me feel quite old. But in thinking about it, I, and in looking at the budget, I know we've talked about this in the past and with several of you, but also some of my former colleagues who sat around this table with us. And every year, I feel like we've given input about how to make the budget better, things that we liked about the budget, didn't like about the budget, particularly around formatting and access and ease of digesting this pretty massive, over $500 million budget. And in my opinion, all the years I've sat around this table, I think this is one of the better-formatted budgets. I think the manager's letter is one of the best, most comprehensive letters. And then having it right next to our strategic plan so that you can look at the budget and look at the strategic plan, the plan that we all spent a lot of time creating. Yeah, I think it really intertwined those two nicely together. So I just want to give feedback on those who formatted and created the budget and tried to make it as easy to navigate as possible. I think you did a fine job, so thank you for that. And then, in thinking about the budget as a whole, I know from, from all of the work that we do that, you know, we don't always get what we, everything we want in every budget. This is a budget of compromise and prioritization. And we went through that process last October where we all identified all of our priorities. And then through a compromise and some consensus, we identified what our top priorities were. And I do believe that this budget is very much aligned with those priorities that we set and moves us in the right direction. Maybe not as quickly as some of us would like to go, but we also know that process takes time and change takes time. So in this budget, a few things that I'm really happy to see are some of the items related to funding for our Oversight Office and homeless outreach team, the investment in our neighborhoods and youth with our Grow 1000 program, our Neighborhood Match Fund, and affordable housing. I'm really eager to move forward with a new lead position that I know Commissioner Lanier and Commissioner Repart and I have talked about at length for the last couple of years. And then Cure Violence, which I know we've talked about as well. So I'm glad to see all of those elements in this budget and moving forward. And then, and then I want to, I want to say thank you to all of you. I so appreciate that we can come together and have different opinions at times, but still have a lot of respect for one another and appreciate that we all do this work because we love our community and we want to make it a better place. And I just really appreciate all of you for your continued servant leadership and dedication. The budget process is one process that we work on. We have a lot of issues in our community to work on together. And there's a lot of work ahead, not just with this ARPA funds, but with other issues that we're trying to tackle. And I just want to say that I'm grateful for all of you to be in this work together and just appreciate your sacrifice and service. So with that, I'll open it up. I think I'll start with Commissioner Moody, since he was not with us. He had to sign off early last week. So I'll turn to you, Commissioner Moody, since you didn't have a, or I shouldn't say last week, on Tuesday. And I'll start with you, and then I'll go through each Commissioner and give you a chance to ask questions and share comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the opportunity to at least read and go through all of the processes of the budget that we've had. I do hate miss, that I missed the other day, but I did stay on as long as I could. But one of the number one things that I liked about the budget is what you said, that there are a lot of funds that are going into the community. Especially, my concern is with homes, businesses, and the equity fund, which I appreciate. Yet still, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. I appreciate this budget because we've gone through a very rough time during this pandemic. And you would assume that what we have gone through, that it would have affected our city greatly financially. But our city has been able to sustain itself. Even in the pension board meeting yesterday, I saw that from the pension board meeting yesterday, we are doing extremely well with our investments. So I think that we're on the right track, and I appreciate this budget. I think this is just my second budget, so I have a long way to go to get to '16, as you have already done. But I appreciate what I've learned thus far, and I think that we're on the right track. And I appreciate the city manager and his staff and the work that is before us all. And you're right, we all have difference in opinions, and yet still to respect one another is a highlight of mine, and I appreciate that. But I'm at a point right now where I'm very happy with what I've read. There are some minor things that we can always do, but that can be done in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I'm just going to go around my screen here, and I'll turn to Commissioner Repart.
Thanks, Mayor. This is just my fourth budget, but I have learned a lot each year. And every process has been different. And I knew, I was very confident, actually, that the staff was going to bring something to us that really took into account all of the things that are pressing on our city right now and was going to try to weigh them. And, you know, for me, the question was, are the investments in balance with where we need to be? Are we trending in the right direction? And like you said, there's, certainly, certainly not everything that I want is in this budget. But that, that's why there's seven of us who sit around this table. And so we all bring our passions and the things that are important to us. I too appreciate the diversity of thought and experience of this group. And I think that, you know, one other thing that I've learned is that we'll likely amend this budget 20 times in the next 12 months. And so we do have opportunities as the new resources become available. If we have a, if we are able to get some legislative fix for certain things, then we can, then we can then have a discussion about how we want to make adjustments throughout the year to make sure, again, that we're continuing to move our investments in the way that we want them to go in the community. So I look forward to continuing the discussion in the post-process around the federal funds. I look forward to continuing the discussion about how we can operationalize these, these investments that we're making with stimulus money into our budgets in the future so that these programs can be given a fair shot to take root here in town, especially things like Cure Violence and the Co-Response Model and the Neighborhoods of Focus investments. But there are a lot of things in this budget that are very innovative that I'm, that I'm excited about. And I look forward, again, like I said, for the ongoing conversation for us to continue to make it better and better throughout the year and continue to make sure, you know, that our investments are in balance with where we want to go as a city.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Isasi.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to see you. It seemed like it was last week, but we were just here together on Tuesday. And, you know, if we're counting, and this is my second budget, but I have done all these budgets virtually. And so that will be my little asterisk as I move forward. I want to say thank you to the entire leadership team, all the departments that poured into this work well before it came into our hands. I want to say thank you also to just all of the city staff. Assistant City Manager Matthews had shared with us, I think, a few months ago, just all the ideas that were generated by staff during this time. So think about those individuals who were maybe not in their regular work environment, but they were doing their everyday job, connecting with individuals, probably responding to things that we might have said, as well as thinking about new and different ways that our city could provide services as we are in a rapidly changing environment. So I just want to say thank you to that and focus on the fact that, you know, for me, that community engagement, I'm happy to see that piece at the end when we think forward about what will happen in the future in this post-budget process, but also recognizing that it's our thoughts, our voices, our connection points to individuals, as well as, you know, the city manager and the leadership team that has presented a thorough budget to all of us and all those city staff that do the work that we might not see them every single day. So I want to say thank you to all of those individuals. So I want to say thank you to all of those individuals that might be watching or like, I'm not going to watch this or might catch up later. So I want to say thank you for that. A lot of sentiments have been shared. I think I have shared in the past, sort of, you know, I think what are, many of us have these policy beliefs or individual ideas about what, what are the things that we hold true? And oftentimes you don't end up in positions like this unless you have very strong values or opinions, right? And so those sometimes clash, but I'm glad that they clash in a productive and appropriate way because I think if we all agreed all the time, never challenged one another, we would not be doing the neighbors and individuals of Grand Rapids our jobs. So thank you for all of that. The other day I heard someone share this comment on a podcast about this idea that courage takes discipline. And I think that's what we are practicing every single day when we get sort of on this virtual dais, is a discipline to say, what are the things that we know and hold true? And also know that there are many truths in the city of Grand Rapids that people experience the city different. We can't change that with one budget with 20 amendments, as Commissioner Repart said. But every day I think this budget and the strategic plan and, and coming here, you know, a couple of times a month is really that courage, that courage and that discipline that we need to have to continue to ask ourselves, what aren't we doing? And leaving that as a question every time we make a vote. And so that is to me is the aspiration and I so appreciate all of you engaging in that way and as well as you city manager. I think we probably met only, you know, in person so many times, but to be able to connect during this process, members of your team. Everyone has just presented this in the most professional and I think engaging way as we can. And to remind the public that the budget process doesn't start in May. You know, the budget process is ongoing. Please don't just reach out to us or feel like you can only reach out to us during the budget process. We want to hear from you at all times of the year and please know that we are constantly thinking about those investments and what needs to be adjusted as, you know, we look at the general fund, but also what you're seeing in the budget is a leveraging of dollars on multiple levels and how that might change. So please know that. So while the, the time may seem compressed, I don't believe that it is compressed. I believe it is a, a year-long process and we have to continue to have that discipline to make sure we are connecting and talking to one another about that. So I am, you know, grateful that we are at the end of this process and look forward to the post-budget process. And that's about it. Wish I could see you all in person, but here we are. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I too, I, I, I keep wondering when we'll be able to safely all get back together and have space for people to come for comment and I'm hoping that that is soon. So it'll be good to be back together. Let's see on my screen, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, and want to begin by saying thank you to City Manager Washington and CFO Claren and, and the entire team who was engaged in the budgeting process. I want to speak to the, what I think are some of the highlights of the budget. I know that City Manager Washington, you mentioned in your PowerPoint presentation, in particular, the, some of the, the, the key points around equity investments as well as capital investments and housing, economic development. I think that those are clearly areas that we ought to be proud of as a commission, as a city. Because again, even in the midst of a global pandemic, we've been able to strategically put dollars, I think, in the right places to position ourselves and our entire community for, for better. And so I just want to commend city staff on that work there. I, I, I will also admit that this has been, again, a very arduous and active process in terms of, of hearing from community. And one of the things I've, I've, I've very much come to appreciate is the great diversity of folk and voices that we hear from in this work. I'm sure that my colleagues can agree that it's not just, you know, folks who are for or against an issue. I myself hear from a lot of people from throughout the city. In fact, a lot of folks who aren't, weren't even in my ward, individuals I have longstanding relationships with, who sometimes just feel the need to want to either affirm or just want to share what they're thinking and what their opinions are about some of our decisions and, and some of the ways in which we should be looking. And that includes my elders in the community, young folk, business owners, those who've been formerly incarcerated, those who are active in community and the grassroots, those who are very active in policy. It's across the board. And these are individuals who, again, they have varying opinions, but they have made it known to me, you know, what their thoughts are about everything from the police budget to, to Grow 1000, to capital investments, you name it. And so I'm, I'm always appreciative of the fact that we live in a, in a city, in a community in which folk aren't necessarily shy about sharing what their thoughts are. And so it's good to be able to go into a process like this and to the best of my ability, trying to hear everybody or as many people as I possibly can because of the desire to want to, to get varying voices. I will say that one of the things that stands out for me, that continues to stand out for me even this year, is I can't get off my mind, the number 38, and that is the number of folk who are no longer with us. These are homicide victims from last year. And I also had made it a point when I could to reach out quite often to those who, who lost loved ones on last year, in a sense of just wanting to let them know that, A, I was thinking about them, but also trying to wrap my head around, obviously, what that, what that feels like. The fact that you lose a loved one in a way that, in which many of them feel they had no control. And I keep my coming back to, what is it that we can do as a body with the limited power that we have to try to improve the life chances of those who, whose lives are being affected, not just from homicide, but whose lives are being affected from perhaps an economy or, you know, lived experience that just is not full of opportunities. And, and so I, when, when I look at this budget, I look at the potential of increasing opportunities. I am all the more excited about ARPA and the dollars that will come from ARPA. I am extremely excited about what we are doing with Cure Violence. I think that I've talked to enough people to understand that community violence is a number one priority, along with that of policing community relations. I've talked to a number of people who, who feel very strongly about the need to have police presence. I've talked to folks who, who feel overpoliced. And again, for anyone out there who assumes that the, that the decision is simple, I would suggest the opposite. Because again, when you, I think, open yourself up to hear from as many people as possible and realize that your responsibility is to, is to, is to be a, someone who is open to hearing from as many people as possible. Then you have to consider everyone's lived experience, but I, I cannot shy away from my own lived experience and what it means for me and what it has meant for me and people who look like me of trying to find better and more effective ways to engage with law enforcement. I tend to believe that if folk are in better, in a better position economically and if neighborhoods are in a position where they are thriving, then there is perhaps less of a, of a need for law enforcement to be present. Because there was something to be said about increased prosperity in communities or neighborhoods where the data shows that those areas that, that don't necessarily need increased policing. And so my goal is to have it to where, you know, and, and we know it can happen. We've seen by way of evidence that have come from Cure Violence, that you can improve police and community relations. And I think that we owe it to not just ourselves, but to our future generations to do all that we can to try to develop a community or, or develop a model in which the community feels better about the presence of police. And that's just not a certain part of the city, but all of the city. And so I'm encouraged as we move forward, not just with this budget, but in the days ahead and our efforts to again, lean in on some of, I think, some of the most difficult issues that any elected body has, has ever dealt with. And I've, again, I love history and it's, ain't nobody dealt with, ain't nobody. And I, and I use that word and those words on purpose. Ain't nobody dealt with the kind of stuff that we're dealing with right now. And I just want to, again, as has been mentioned, I want to tip my hat to my colleagues because this is not easy and I just know that, again, the decisions that we're making have impact. And I just, I'm, I'm appreciating the fact that all of you are engaging in this process in a very thoughtful manner. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanier?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just thank the city staff for the many presentations and the many meetings that you, we feel like we've been in a lot of meetings. I know you all feel like we have no idea what it feels like to be in a lot of meetings and especially to do this virtually. So I'd just like to thank you all. Thank you, City Manager, for leading your team through those efforts. And to all appointed officials, because you all are going through budget, a budget review process as well. One of the presentations, I, I think everyone did an amazing job with their presentations. One of them I'd like to highlight though, and that was Stacy's presentation on equity. And that was a highlight for me because as you all know, when we were going through the strategic planning process, I was concerned about not extracting equity out and making it its own pillar and, and bringing attention to equity in such a way that we would see change. And after, you know, multiple conversations about that, the city manager made a commitment in one of our public meetings that he and his team would make sure that without equity being singled out, that it would be woven throughout the entire organization. And Stacy's presentation helped me to see that that's happening well and in a very thoughtful manner. Because the elements that she highlighted just really said how much work has gone into trying to create a more equitable community. So thank you, Stacy. And, and to the, the rest of the departments who participated in that, because I know that that work is challenging. But, but to be able to see those results was helpful. Frequently when I am asked to speak in public engage, engage and have public engagements about public service or civic engagement, I, I often talk about the policymaker. And I refer to it as crock pot work. Because you spend a whole lot of time and not necessarily getting quick results. And this budget, there are a lot of elements within this budget that, you know, we've reached the end of the crock pot serving for so many issues that, you know, we've spent a lot of years on. Excuse me, Mayor, you mentioned lead and that's, that's a highlight for me. So I'll just kind of highlight a few after spending, you know, over a year on the county's task force and reviewing the statewide task force and then sitting on your city task force regarding lead. I'm really happy to see that there's focus in a different way on lead, including having a position that is, is going to be focused on, on making sure that lead is a priority for, throughout the city. Capital reserves is another highlight and I think I want to highlight it because it, it's really important to, to save and set things aside for periods like this. And I think Commissioner Moody mentioned that, you know, we are, the city of Grand Rapids is faring okay in comparison to a number of cities. And we owe it to work that was done many years ago, many commissioners ago, or commissions ago, because of their investment in capital reserves, we're in a position where the bottom didn't fall out. And so I'm grateful for the ARPA, the ARPA funding that will not only help us to not have to use so much of that, but also to be able to invest in that. Another highlight for me is the focus on those who are experiencing homelessness. Again, another one of those things that we've been talking about for a significant amount of time, but to see that there is intentionality about addressing these issues. And these to me are the issues that are solvable with, with attention being drawn to them and with all parties and all hands on deck. And I, I see in the hot team that that's the start of that. And I think the growth in, in bringing on other organizations will be a continuation of, of addressing that issue. I, I like, another element is the post-budget, the participatory budget, kind of post-budget discussions that we're looking to have. My colleague, Commissioner Moody, has been asking for something very similar for as many years as he's been on the commission, as we've been talking about third word equity funding. You know, he's been, he, he may not be using the words participatory budget, but he's saying, give us the money, let us talk to the people and spend it. And that's exactly what this is. I think it would have been great to have some of those discussions prior to the budget, but certainly appreciative in light of kind of not knowing what was going to happen with ARPA and all of that, that we will be doing some of that post-budget. Housing, again, another crock pot meal. And I can remember Commissioner Lumpkins being on the commission. So this was really early in my tenure as a commissioner where he, Commissioner Kelly and I went to then Mayor Hartwell to say, well, I remember saying, you know, within months of being on the commission, I don't even really understand what market rate housing is and how we know what the market is saying. But I know that something's wrong with every single project coming before us being market rate projects. And, and then talking with Commissioners Lumpkins and, and Kelly about those concerns and us taking that commission to, to Mayor Hartwell and him saying, okay, well, go figure it out. And, and, and then the Great Housing Strategies process started. And so to be able to invest this level of funding in, in housing is another thing that, that brought joy. And I think the other piece is just in economic investments as well and economic development investments as well. I, you know, we were, I was on my South Town Board meeting yesterday and it's just a really good place to be where we have the CIA's receiving dollars, because I was one of those, Mayor, we were talking about this the other week. We were one of those that, we didn't get the, we didn't get a deficit, but we did have a very small budget when it was just Madison Square. And, and, and now, you know, these were things that, that the community didn't, again, express it in the same way. All they knew was that they wanted business districts that mirrored downtown, that they were, you know, walkable and vibrant. And in, in, in these types of investments is when you get those types of results. So that's another positive. I think there are a few areas that, you know, I'd like to see some, some adjustments. And one of them is voting on a Thursday morning on the budget. I expressed that last year. I think this is outside of our normal time when we are together. And I think voting on a budget on Tuesdays, whether it's in the mornings or in the evenings, I think is a better place to, to, to place this work. Because it, you know, those who are following, they're following Tuesdays and not necessarily Thursday, despite how much time and energy we may put into communicating that Thursday is the date. The other piece is that not everybody has a flexible schedule. So, you know, even if they've made commitments on a Tuesday to change that, I think is, is challenging. I think the other thing that I've mentioned is third word equity. I am very appreciative of the investments that are going into third word equity. I, what I would not want to see is, you know, what I would describe as a crabs in the bucket type of, of, of a process that pits communities who, who our data is saying we have not invested in against one another. And so I would like to figure out a way to be able to do that without, without the pitting. And then lastly, I'll just say, I think there's still room for innovation. I think all of us would say that, you know, in, in some of our departments across the city. city. And if things feel, you know, the same or even similar to, to the way it was, then we didn't go far enough. And so my challenge would be is to, is to start peeling back and having some of those challenging discussions within to say, okay, what can we do that is radical, that will have radical results across the entire city operations so that our community can feel those radical changes? And I think we've done that well in some spaces and I think there's room to grow in others. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. And Commissioner, I want to, I want to thank you for being the strong, consistent voice, especially during the strategic planning process, asking the question, how do we operationalize equity throughout the entire organization and plan? And I think you're right, figuring out how to do that has been a, a work in progress and a lot of folks here in the city have worked really hard to, to do that work. So thank you for, for constantly asking that question and pushing us forward. And then the crock pot analogy, I hadn't heard that before. I may steal it from you in the future. So thanks for sharing that today. And then I'll turn to Commissioner O'Connor.
Thank you Mayor. You know, lots been said about the budget. I just, you know, I think it's important to recognize that this, this budget is prudent, it's measured, it's responsible. It makes, you know, some strategic investments without, without going, I think, in, in a, you know, in a time of uncertainty in any specific direction that puts, you know, pushes us in jeopardy in the future. We, we, I think we responsibly save money, given the, the uncertainty of, of the current economic climate. But I think that, you know, there's a big, a lot of things that we like to, that are the, the hot button issues that we talk about, that, that we might not all agree on. And those certainly have a percentage of our budget, but the, you know, I think still the majority of, of the dollars that we both receive and then allocate go to things that aren't really that controversial or sexy. There are things like, you know, making sure we have clean, safe drinking water and that our trash gets picked up. And, you know, we've made significant process in improving our streets and, and infrastructure that we've, you know, we've done things like invest in our future sustainability by putting LED light bulbs and investing in that system. And so, you know, while there's, there are certainly things that, you know, that we, we, you know, that are to be debated ongoing, the, the majority of these dollars are spent just making sure that the, you know, the lights come on and people are safe and the buses run on time. And I think that's the most important thing that, you know, a lot of times I think that work goes either, it, it doesn't receive the recognition that it deserves. And we live in a pretty great community that has done a lot of things really, really well for a long time. And so I'm just appreciative of the fact that, you know, this work is ongoing, that there's going to be time to continue our, our policymaking as it relates to some of these challenges that lie ahead and that we're currently dealing with. But for the most part, we do a really great job in Grand Rapids, making sure that, that we have a, a safe, vibrant community that, you know, that has a lot of great things that I think many other communities throughout Michigan and the United States are probably envious of, that we have. We've, we've done some things really, really well. And I look forward to continuing this work with you all as we, we move to hopefully approve this budget here in just a few minutes.
Thank you Commissioner. I, I appreciate you bringing that up. That's an excellent point and I think all of us should be proud of the level of service that we're able to provide in this city. Commissioners, any final thoughts or questions before I turn to the city clerk to call for a vote? All right, city clerk.
Commissioner Lanier.
Hi.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. Thank you again, everyone, for all your work. And we will look forward to moving forward with another budget process around the ARPA funds. So we will look forward to that. So now I will turn to public comment. I'll open that up. And as we open that up, I will invite Ms. Griselda Estrada, who's with us, to provide translation services. So again, if you'd like to be heard, you can call 456-3000 or 311, hit number one and then number one. Griselda?
Thank you Mayor. Gracias Alcaldesa. My name is Griselda Estrada. I will be available to assist or call us through Spanish interpretation during the public comment. If you would like to call a comment today, please call 311 or 616-456-3000. Mi nombre es Griselda Estrada. Estaría aquí para asistir a nuestros llamantes con interpretación en español durante este periodo de comentario. Por favor, prima uno para comentarios y o llame tres al tres uno uno o al seis uno seis cuatro cinco seis tres mil. Thank you.
Thank you Griselda. City clerk, do we have anyone in the queue?
There's no one in the queue at this time Mayor. I don't know if we're live.
I think we need to give a few more seconds for on Facebook and YouTube to catch up.
Okay, thank you city clerk. All right, Daniel, anyone in the queue?
No ma'am.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close that public comment period. Commissioners, again, thank you all. Your input is really important, not just in this process and policymaking, but will be really valuable moving forward with the next process we undertake over the next couple of months. So with that, I hope you have a great rest of the day and I will see you all soon. And thanks again for your service. Thanks.